Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, March 10, 2020. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Sarah Pelk, our sign language interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill 190. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the PA Department of Conservation and National Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program to provide funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $75,000 with a local match of $75,000 to come out of the 2020 City of Pittsburgh operating budget in the form of an in-kind work. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $150,000 for this stated purpose. Bill 191. Resolution granting onto Big River Development LP their successors and assigns the privileged license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 2305 Smallman Street in the Second Ward, Seventh Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill 192. Resolution adopting a planned revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facility plan for the Villas at Winter Park at Haxtown Street Extension, Pittsburgh PA 15203. Bill 193. Resolution amending Resolution 106 of 2019 by including an additional economic development and housing microfinance program line item for an amount not to exceed $250,000 in the total costs thereof by the same amount not to exceed $3,590,320, Council Districts all. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 194. Resolution amending Resolution 56 of 2018 entitled Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with the United Way of Southwestern PA for services relating to career transition projects and providing for the payment of the costs thereof by increasing the authorized amount by $120,000 and extending the term two years. Councilman R. Daniel Lovell presents Bill 195. Resolution further amending Resolution 797 effective December 28, 2017 entitled Resolution adopting and approving the 2018 Capitol Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capitol Improvement Program by reducing Smallman Street reconstruction by $473,374.38 and increasing complete streets by $473,374.38. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presents Bill 196. Resolution amending Resolution 316 of 2017 authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with core business technologies for software, equipment, services related to the installation of payment processing and cashiering system for the Department of Finance to include additional option year and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $390,552.17 for years 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2020. Bill 197. Resolution providing for the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with Questica for professional services. This is a contract renewal via sole source for annual subscription fees related to budgeting and performance management systems. Questica will continue to improve the city's budgeting and financial planning processes, increase staff productivity, enhance analytical capabilities, and provide more stakeholders with an additional information about the cost and the performance of the city's services, cost not to exceed $412,500 over five years. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill 198. Ordinance amending and supplanting the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code, Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 1 to Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access in order to eliminate park minimum parking requirements for single-family attached dwellings. This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, March 10, 2020. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 10, 2020. We ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kill Smith, President. Seven members present.
Thank you very much. First order of business, will we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please place the flag.
I look to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, so we have a moment of silence and for those who want, you can pray silently. Please help this city. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have Councilman Corey O'Connor that has two proclamations. If he would come forward.
Yeah, everybody up. Come on, everybody, come on up. This is, obviously, it's this time of year, it's St. Patrick's Day. We have the parade, we have Miss Smiling Irish Eyes. We actually have a new parade emcee if he would like to come up as well. I know Jackie's usually not welcome in public, but we'll bring him up. So we actually have two procs today. I'm going to go through them relatively quickly, the St. Patrick's Day one, but this is the first year in many years, and Kathy is here with us, that we have lost somebody that was very impactful, not only to the parade, but to the Hibernians and to the Irish community in the City of Pittsburgh, and that is our good friend who passed away this year, Mr. Glenn Cannon. And we're lucky to have Kathy with us today as well. So whereas, in the words of Charles Dickens, "Do all the good you can and make as little fuss about it as possible." Whereas Glenn Cannon, whose career in public service spanned decades, lived a life of distinguished service, honor, humility. In the words of his colleagues, "Public safety was his life." Mr. Cannon was the founding director of the Pittsburgh EMS and former director of public safety for the City of Pittsburgh, whereas formerly from Highland Park, Glenn spent his life in serving others. His career in emergency management and public safety began in 1979 when Mayor Pete Flaherty named him to oversee a citywide mobile intensive care and advanced life support ambulance system. Impending a bigger vision, he then established Pittsburgh's first river rescue unit, the first specialized river rescue, and the city's first hazardous material response team. As the city's public safety director from 1986 to 1992, he managed 27,000 employees, or 2,700 employees. Later, he became the Allegheny County first, the first county manager, and then director of PA's Emergency Management Agency. He reached the pinnacle of his career when he was recruited by President George W. Bush to serve as Director of Disaster Operations for Homeland Security. Whereas Glenn passed away January 20, 2020, at the age of 71, leaving behind his great family, and I'll let Kathy talk about the family as well. He was a longtime treasured and beloved member of the AOH for which he was treasurer at the time of his passing. The 2020 St. Patrick's Day Parade to be held on March 18, no, 14, Lynette, a little early on that one, sorry, will be dedicated to his memory. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the groundbreaking and visionary work of Glenn Cannon. His legacy will live on in the work of the Pittsburgh Police, Fire, and EMS and in the progressive public safety policies of the State of Pennsylvania and the nation. His giving spirit and dedication and commitment to public service will serve to inspire all of us. So Glenn, wherever you are, a big thank you.
Need a motion? Need a second? All in favor, say "yes," opposed, say "no."
Just, just, thank you all, thank you. Glenn was just so humble that he would just be amazed at everything and what everyone is doing to recognize him. We know that he loved this city and we know that he was dedicated to saving lives and helping others. Thank you very much.
And Glenn would want the parade to go on and we are going to do that this Saturday.
As everybody knows, this is the second largest St. Patrick's Day Parade in the country and we're very proud of it. This year, I'm going to just read the winners of all the awards, whereas the parade will begin at 10:00, 10:00 a.m., if Jackie's on time. Sorry, we had a lunch, daylight savings hurt you on Sunday, you know? That's right, 10:30, you're safe, you're safe. Well, our grand marshal this year is, if you don't know, Tim Finerty has been around in the AOH for many, many years. And our Hibernian of the Year is Mr. Joe White. Miss Smiling Irish Eyes is Stephanie O'Donnell. And her court consists of Kelly Bench. And this was, this individual was here because she told her local council member that he had to call the principal of the school to get her out of school today, which I've gotten that request many times, I've never followed through, but this time it made sense. And that is Courtney McGinley. So now be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh, in honor of Pittsburgh's Irish community, does hereby declare the days of March 10 through the 17, 2020, to be St. Patrick's Day Parade Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion? Need a second? All in favor, say "yes," opposed, say "no." Opposed, say "yes," Mr. Carter.
Who's, Mac, you want to talk? Tim?
Just want to thank everybody for showing up. I hope you show up on Saturday, we're going to have a beautiful day. Everything's on, on schedule here. That's what we always say at our meetings, every committee gives a report and we say, "How are you guys doing?" And they say, "On schedule." Typically, what I would do now is I'd introduce the grand marshal for the parade this year. You notice that they have the microphone lower for Corey and our grand marshal, so I'll just speak loud because I'm taller than they are. They're the wee people. So, Tim Finerty, he's a long member, he's been with the parade since its inception, a great friend of the parade, great friend of the Irish community. He is probably pretty familiar with this building, I think he does most of his work here. And Tim Finerty, the grand marshal for 2020.
I'm glad someone used their influence to get the mic in the right position so that you could actually speak in it, to it as a short person, but I want to say how honored I am to be named as the grand marshal of the 2020 parade. I've been in the AOH since the '70s. I got on to the parade committee in the '90s. I got on the Irish Society about eight or nine years ago and it is very, very helpful to me to be on those committees and help the Irish and to express my Irish heritage. So I want to thank everyone who helped me along the way and as a final parting thing, I would ask you to please be kind to people. And someone had a hat on Facebook today, it says, "Make America Kind Again," and I think that's a great philosophy and it's one that we should carry forward in our daily lives instead of just saying it. And I will introduce the Hibernian of the Year, Joe White, and I heard his bio in a speech on Sunday at the Communion Breakfast and I was taken aback by how kind he has been throughout the years to those less fortunate and helped them out in so many ways. And he was very instrumental with Division Nine, which he's a member of, resurrecting and getting the St. Patrick statue at St. Patrick's in the manner that it is now. So with that, Joe White.
City Council in the City of Pittsburgh, thank you for having us today. Born and raised on the North Side, I am so proud of the, of the Irish community and the support that, that we give to this community. I want to thank everybody from the North Side, I want to thank everybody from Allegheny County, especially from the City of Pittsburgh. This is a great, great community and, and happy St. Patrick's Day to all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peggy Cooney, I'm the chair lady of the Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Committee. I just briefly want to introduce the girls and give you a little bit of bio on each one of them. Stephanie O'Donnell. Stephanie's parents are Kevin O'Donnell and Kathleen. Stephanie is a graduate of Penn Trafford High School where she was a high honor role student for four years and a member of the National Honor Society. She is currently enrolled at Slippery Rock where she's on the women's volleyball team. She's very involved with her church. Stephanie plans on becoming a physical therapist. Next, we have Kelly Bench. Kelly's parents are Michael and Kathleen Bench. She has a lot of Irish DNA, for sure. She was very involved in competitive Irish dance with the Bell School for the last 14 years. She did sing the Canadian, Irish, and American national anthems at national, at national competition. Currently, she's attending Penn State University studying chemical engineering and her goal is to become a chemical engineer working at a job in, involved in environmental sustainability. And last, we have Courtney, who's legally out of school today. She's the daughter of Jim and Kelly McGinley. Courtney hails from Lawrenceville area. She is a senior at Alder Dice High School where she is on the high honor roll. She's currently been accepted at Temple University and Penn State University and she plans on becoming a broadcast journalist. So thank you very much and this is our three girls for this year.
the parade at Market Square and we teamed up with the Boy Scouts this year. So the Boy Scouts will be selling our shirts, they're going to get a little bit of profit, we're going to get a little bit of profit. And if anyone wants to ask me why we teamed up with the Boy Scouts, because we're all busy on St. Patrick's Day. So, we think it's a great fit, this is the first time we're doing it with the Boy Scouts and I think it would be wonderful. So we have T-shirts, sweatshirts, and long-sleeved T-shirts for sale in Market Square and along the parade route. So, please support the parade by buying from the Boy Scouts and you're also supporting the Boy Scouts. Thank you.
We'll wait for a moment, give the room a chance.
Won't you be ready? Is that, it's a big difference, right? It's a big difference.
If you could take the conversations outside, please, we would appreciate it. I do use this opportunity to talk about how we're all interrelated, that my grand, my great-grandmother was from Ireland and came to this country and had my grandmother, my grandmother, and then had my father. So I have Irish in me too. Thank you very much. With those two proclamations, we have one to be read into the record.
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, March 15, 2020, to be Zachary James Esch Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion? Need a second? Any conversation, no conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying "a." Opposed, there's "nay." That takes us to the next order of business, which is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak, please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of three minutes, when the yellow light comes up, you have one minute to summarize. When the red light comes on, your time is up. I would also like to remind everyone that the rules of council state the comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted and order will be maintained at all times. Will the first speaker please come to the podium?
Hello, everybody, council members and fellow Pittsburghers. My name is Rick Nor and I'm from Brookline. Today, I would like to discuss the Parks Trust Fund Board and the lack of transparency, which I would call secrecy, concerning the rules that govern this board. As far as I'm concerned, this board and its lack of transparency is bad government. And that's all I'm going to say about this. However, I would like to present council with comments that I have prepared for them that address this issue. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time and have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I would, I would like these comments to be handled in a manner that is confidential and in the same way that a non-disclosure agreement would be handled with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and the city government. Thank you.
Thank you. If we give your concern to the clerk, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown, I live in the Hill District. And I saw someone, they were saying, "You look like you're dragging." I said, "It's getting to be, when I have to come here, that I get depressed." You know, I just listened to your grand master for the parade and did you hear what he said? Be kind, be kind, all of you. What you just don't seem to understand is this, and I'll keep saying it, you don't know what's happening in my community and when I come down and tell you, you don't want to listen. You think you can make rules for people when you don't know what they're dealing with? You can't. You're making rules for yourself. All of you sitting there, every one of you, I believe is self-serving when you come down here, you're not worried about what we say. Also, Mr. O'Connor, when you pointed for the sergeant-at-arms to take him out, if I had been standing here, the sergeant-at-arms is ready to come over and take me out. And you know it because they've, they've trained him so, it's just like I said, I have to take him to court for him, for, for the chief to tell him what he can do, not just tell him if I don't stop talking during my three minutes that I will be put out of here. I'm not going to keep on taking it because I want you to understand, you're not as good as you think you are, you don't know as much as you think you know. And you won't know it not unless you live in my neighborhood. If you don't live in my neighborhood, how come I can't come down and tell you what's happening and you won't listen? Now, Ms. Gross is sitting there, I'm still, I'm pissed every time I think about this reverend. When I'm talking and she talks, both of them sitting there talking to each other, Coghill and her, and then she gets loud, that's when I stopped and said something, he going to tell me that I can't say, I can't talk to her like that. Why can she talk during my three minutes? You know why? Because Burgess, towards me, he is doing same race discrimination, that's what he's doing towards me. He's going to make sure that I don't tell about him and that woman, that he was a professor and they sweeping down the dumbest woman in the class, these are, these are the black women telling me, and she got an A. They said that they, he did something with her. I believe it. I didn't at first until when I came to speak one day and he had made sure that I wouldn't be able to speak. If I hadn't scared Mary Beth, I said, "Mary Beth, if you don't let me sit, let me speak, I'm taking you to court." She got scared, "Okay, only you." I said, "But what about the rest of the people?" Because we signed up there at 12. Here, here he said that we had to sign up by 10:30. He still was on a 9:30 meeting, hadn't even started City Council meeting, but going to stop me. I'm going to still, I'm going to keep coming and anything I know I'm going to speak about, just like with the park, Mr. Lovell. The, the people in the community is saying, "You built that park on the top of the hill. If one of them babies rolled down, they're down on Baum Boulevard." Have a nice day.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Belsuver and Squirrel Hill, Global Intelligence Society Candidates for President 2020. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org I created and the GIN, the Global Intelligence and Information Network. Concern of council should be what to do about the COVID-19 in Pittsburgh. I, I think that the following should be done. We need to maximize response at the local level. I have been adamant that the local legislature is the most important of the three, state and federal, in cities. most important of the three, state and federal, in cities and municipalities across the United States, and minimize the expectations of response from Pennsylvania State and other governments, state governments, their secondary, and in my view, the hapless US national government, tertiary. The local legislature is primary. That's you. Offices of council, in my view, should legislate to, one, get 300,000-plus tests for the COVID-19, and 300,000 minimum N95 masks. It's your job to get them. It's your responsibility to get them. It's your responsibility to protect us. Second, care for the scanners, the human scanners that are downstairs that are not protected. I have repeatedly said in this council that they are not protected effectively. They need masks. They need the availability of biohazard and chemhazard suits, and they need to have the availability of tests. Third, condemn political public mass meetings of, of no greater than 100, not 1,000, but no greater than 100. I don't understand you people hugging each other here. This is surreal. This situation is grave, and will become more grave, and in particular around Oakland. We need to invite colleagues from the Biosafety Lab there, and UPMC, and the AGH Systems to come here and talk with us, to allow us to ask questions. And fifth, to create a limited entry and exit, if not quarantine zone, around Oakland. Ms. Strasburger, you should lead in this, to investigate this and report this to us. Now, there's some evidence that, from Jean Wa, if you trust the information that's being furnished to the WHO, on the ninth of a reduction in new cases in China, from 2,400 in the beginning of February, 10 February, down to 129 just a few days ago. This is encouraging.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we will now move to the presentation of papers. Our first order is myself, Chair of Urban Recreation, Mr. Coghill, for me. Thank you very much, Mr. Coghill.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 200, Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I, Administrative Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities. To add, Chapter 177D, Pittsburgh Commission on Racial Equity pursuant to the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter 102 and 208. Also pursuant to Section 102208 of the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, council shall transmit a copy of this proposed ordinance to the mayor for his recommendation, and council shall take no further action on this ordinance, till the mayor either sends a recommendation to City Council or the expiration of 30 days from the date he received this proposed ordinance. Therefore, this proposed ordinance is not currently subject to Rule 8 of the Rules of Council. Bill Number 201, Resolution Adopting the Ten Commitments of Racial Equity.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 190, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $75,000 with a local match of $75,000 to come out of the 2020 City of Pittsburgh operating budget in the form of an in-kind work. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $150,000. Bill Number 191, Resolution Granting unto Big River Development LP their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 2305 Smallman Street in the Second Ward, 7th Council District.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 192, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Villas at Winter Park, Haxtown Street. Bill Number 193, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 106 of 2019, which is a resolution providing for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the administration of certain projects and program by including an additional economic development and housing microfinance program line item for an amount not to exceed $250,000, and the total cost thereof by the same amount not to exceed $3,590,320, Council Districts all. Bill Number 202, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 797, adopting and approving the 2018 Capitol Budget as amended by Resolution 876 of 2019 in order to correct the account number for the URA's microfinance program.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 194, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 56, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania for relating to the Career Transition Project 21 and ABLE, and providing for the payment of costs by increasing the authorized amount by $120,000 and by extending the term two years.
Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Financial Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavelle.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 195, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, by reducing Smallman Street reconstruction by $473,374.38, and increasing complete streets by $473,374.38.
We have Mr. Lavelle.
Yes, motion to waive Rule 8 on Bill 195?
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committees meeting. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Access Management. Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 196, Resolution, Amending Resolution 613, which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Core Business Technologies for Software, to include an additional option year, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $390,552.17 for years 2015, 16, 17, and 2020. Bill Number 197, Resolution Providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement with Critisca, Inc. for Professional Services. This is a contract renewal via sole source for annual subscription fees related to a budgeting and performance management system. Critisca will continue to improve the city's budgeting and financial planning processes, increase staff productivity, enhance analytical capabilities, and provide more stakeholders with additional information about the cost and performance of city services, cost not to exceed $412,500 over five years. Bill Number 203, Resolution, Amending Resolution 730, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to revise the not-to-exceed funding amount and to clarify the leasing process.
Ms. Strasburger.
I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 8 on Bill Number 203 at the request of the administration.
Is there a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committees meeting. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 198, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zoning Code, Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access, in order to eliminate minimum parking requirements for single-family attached dwellings.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Council President Kell Smith, Chair of Hearings. In her absence, I will present for her.
Council President Smith presents Bill Number 199, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, by amending City Council's CDBG unspecified local option line items, reducing Save-A-Life Today Pittsburgh by $8,000, and increasing Birmingham Foundation and Save-A-Life Today Pittsburgh by $8,000, and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
I need a motion to waive Rule 8 as her request.
The move.
So, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before this council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports for Committee for Final Action. Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Financial Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 187, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for March 4, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 22, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 241, Amusement Tax. Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 120, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title I, Administrative Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, in order to clarify definitions of contract types, correct conflicting language between commodities and professional services, and add additional categories for a request to waive the competitive bidding requirements to be in line with current practice and national standards. Bill Number 121, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title I, Administrative Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 16122, Department from Bidding on and Participating in City Contracts, in order to change the requirement of an affidavit to be a certification which will simplify the contracting process and reduce costs to our suppliers by no longer requiring the document to be notarized. Bill Number 128, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of Three Warrants for the Total Sum of $70,000 Relating to the Settlement of a Lawsuit Filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 142, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Compass Natural Gas Partners LP for the Lease of a Compressed Natural Gas Fueling System and Provision of Fuel for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $378,000. Bill Number 143, Resolution Amending Resolution 837, which the City Controller to create a special trust fund to be designated as the Shenley Park Rink Trust Fund, to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to utilize the trust fund. Bill Number 161, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter into an Agreement with PNC Bank, National Association, to Grant a License to Enter into Certain Parcels in Order to Perform Certain Work, Including Geotechnical and Environmental Surveys, Site and Topographic Surveys, Utility Assessments, and Engineering and Evaluation.
You've heard the reading title of the bills. Is there any discussion on these bills, starting with Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm offering up an amendment on Bill 22, which is the amusement tax. I want to thank members for your patience as we worked through this. I also want to thank Director Lanier and everyone that participated in that process, including our Law Department and our Budget Director Bill Urbannick. We have sign-offs from all of them. There are not substantive changes to the bill itself. It was merely to help it read easier and be better understood by those that are affected by paying the amusement tax. And so with that, I offer up a motion to amend Bill 22.
Need a second?
Second.
Any more conversations on the amendment? Seeing no conversations on the amendment, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thanks, everybody.
Any other conversation on the bill as amended, starting... Anything on any of the bills in this committee?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've spoken with a number of council members over the last week, and I spoke to President Smith last night about Bill Number 142, which is the bill about the compressed natural gas facility lease for $378,000. We got an email, members, all members got an email following up from our questions on Wednesday's meeting. On Friday, they kind of raised even more questions. So, for example, it was told to us at the table that there was a dollar per gallon savings with the new project, and this memo from the Office of Management and Budget apologizes and said, in fact, it will be an increase in fuel costs per gallon. And so it does look like there's a net loss on the project, and President Smith was willing to support a recommit, recommit also we can clarify these issues tomorrow. So a motion to recommit, Bill 142.
Second, any other conversation on the recommit? Seeing no conversation on the recommit, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That bill will be moved to tomorrow's standing committee meeting and will be omitted from this final action today. Any other conversations on the bills as deliberated on? If not, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills having received the finally required, legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us now to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 188, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for March 4, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 144, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with Bucks County Community College for Hazardous Material Safety Officer Training and Certification Services at a sum not to exceed $9,000. Bill Number 146, Ordinance Supplement in Ordinance Number 36, Relatives of the Pittsburgh Code at Title VI, Conduct Article III, Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals, Chapter 636, Wild Animals, Section 63606, Prohibiting the Capture and Harm of Any Wild Birds, to prohibit the Sale of Native or Indenous Birds, to Eliminate Any Permits or License Allowing Individuals to Trap Wild Birds, and to Completely Prohibit Trapping Wild Birds Other Than by a Properly Qualified and Trained Employee of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Animal Care and Control, when the wild bird is injured, resides within a building, or poses an imminent risk of property damage or physical harm.
You've heard the reading title of these bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of these bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 189, Report of the Committee on Public Works for March 4, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 139, Resolution Amending Resolution 510, which is a resolution providing for a contract in or agreement in connection with the production of Oakland Transportation Study and associated projects to provide for a specific payee and authorize entering into a contract for the Oakland Transportation Study. Bill Number 140, Resolution Amending Resolution 336- Bill Number 140, Resolution, Amending Resolution 336, providing for a contract in connection with production of the Hill District Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan and Associated Projects to provide for a specific payee and authorize entering into a contract for the Hill District Transportation Study. Bill Number 160, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 763, Resolution Taking Appropriating and Condemning by the City for Roadway Purposes Certain Property in the 26th Ward owned by Sessi Portuguese and known as 45 Semisir Street, Authorizing the Payment of Just Compensation and Necessary and Incidental Acquisition and Relocation Costs Related thereto, to amend the chargeable account to reflect the 2020 operating budget.
You've heard the reading title of the bills. Is there any discussion on these bills? Seeing now, none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of these bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you very much. The bills having received the legally required votes is now finally passed. That takes us to meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold an executive session that relates to Bill 162. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March 11, with sessions at 1:00 p.m. and 1:30, council will hold a briefing on OMB legislation, Bills 120 and 121. Now, that takes us to motions and resolutions. Are there things from members? We have a little counsel from Mr. O'Connor. I'm sorry, I did not see that on my agenda.
That's okay, no problem.
Councilman Corey O'Connor, Council President Teresa Kel Smith, and Councilmen Bobby Wilson and Anthony Coghill present. Be it further resolved that this council encourages the Allegheny delegation of both chambers of the General Assembly to support this vital legislation, as well as any companion legislation to it that may be introduced.
Mr. O'Connor.
Just briefly, this came from the firefighters. This is about benefits that have been taken out, and there's a bill in front of the House at the state level to ensure that they get benefits for mental health as well. And there's discussions that it won't go through, and that's why, you know, we introduced this bill for them, and hopefully, everybody can support it. Thank you.
Any other conversation on this, Mr. Derek Kraus?
May I please be added as the sponsor as well, too, please?
Any other conversation? All right, I need a motion to approve.
A move.
Need a second. Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Anything else for in terms of most of the resolutions, Mr. Kraus?
Thank you. I should be more prepared. I apologize. I wanted to call something up. This past Saturday, Councilwoman, Officer Christine Luffy, our resource officer from Zone 3, held her annual Biscuits Bingo in the South Side. She gets an attendance of about 600 people every year. This was the 20th year for the event, and I can't tell you exactly what she has raised to date, but this year, in one day, they raised $53,360-odd dollars that will all go to help and assist local animal shelters in the work that they do. And that's just a pretty damn amazing accomplishment and a dedication from a police officer. And I don't think Christine gets the recognition that she really should get for the things that she does, and I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. It was a great event, and we thank Christine and everybody that worked, because there are dozens and dozens of volunteers that work in that event to make it a success. But it was another good one, and I wanted to recognize her. So, thank you.
Any other conversation? Mr. Coghill.
I just wanted to take a quick second to thank the people of Public Works with their pothole blitz this weekend. I mean, I can't speak for my colleagues, but they were all over my district, and I could smell the tar when I walked outside my door, and it was beautiful. So, I just want to compliment them for, you know, working overtime. I think they went at it maybe 12 hours on Saturday and Sunday as well. So, good job by Mike Gable and his crews.
Anything else from members? Before we adjourn, one of the speakers during the resolutions talked about making America kind again, and I certainly agree with that. But I can't help but be reminded that that line is an abbreviation or a change of Trump's line, "Make America Great Again." And I always, time I hear it, I always wonder when were they talking about, right? They want to go back to exactly when to make America great? Do they want to go back to slavery days? Or they want to go back to legal segregation days? Or they want to go back to where it was, although segregation was illegal, but separate but equal, which was not separate and very unequal? I go back, I guess, to my parents. For many years, I didn't really understand why my parents didn't go to restaurants. They would go to takeout. We'd go to Winkies, and we would go to McDonald's, we would go to Wendy's, but almost rarely, almost never, would my parents go to sit-down restaurants. And I grew up, you know, eating in the car. It was the way, even when we took drips, which was rare, we ate in the car. We almost never went to restaurants. And I didn't really know it until I was probably 18 or 19, or something like that. Some age like that, when the Christian Brothers took me to restaurants and took me to travel and hotels, and my parents didn't do any of that. And the reason really was that my father had been a busboy, and my mother had faced discrimination in restaurants, and they just felt that that was not their place, and so they just wouldn't go. And so, those incidents, which are still fresh in my memory, although I'm not sure I fully understood them until I became an adult, is still part of the legacy of our city, still the legacy of this country. And so I will spend all of my time, rest of the time I have on council, trying to really make Pittsburgh the city it can be. I'm grateful for the mayor's partnership, and I hope we will bring, even though sometimes we'll bring those screaming and kicking, to the reality that racial equity is necessary. You cannot have equality until you have equity. We've recognized that Pittsburgh has a crisis in racism, institutional racism, and so now that we've admitted that, now it's time to fix it. And the only way we fix it is by placing an equal amount of resources into communities of color. And we're going to do that. We're going to have that conversation. We are going to make Pittsburgh greater, because I believe this city is greater than racism. I believe this country is greater than racism, and I have, I'm optimistic that this council will be greater than racism. So, with that, I will now ask for a motion to excuse the absent minutes, excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. We are adjourned.